I'd like to call a special meeting to order.
Will everybody please rise for the prayer? Don't you?
Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather together this evening for the purpose of celebrating a new term in office for our board, we acknowledge that there is no greater honor than being entrusted with the welfare of your children. Lead, guide, and direct these men and women who give unselfishly of their time and talents to make decisions in the best interest of the future of this community. Bless them for their willingness to serve and grant them the wisdom and courage to take a stand for the students in St. Bernard Parish. These things we ask in your name.
Amen. Ms. Dysart, would you lead us in a place, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Fauchet.
Mrs. Acevedo.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mrs. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine.
Here.
Mrs. Dysart.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Mrs. White.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Fauchet. Point of privilege, please. On behalf of the board, we'd just like to welcome everybody to swear in ceremony. This is a special occasion for all this, for this board. We have difficult times sometimes in public education, but this board can handle it. I can promise you that. So with that, we're gonna start with the board members swearing in. We're gonna start with, let's see, Ms. Darlene Acevedo, District 3, and Ms. Lena Torres. Good evening, Ms. Torres.
Wait, I don't know where that's from the kids. Gordon, Cindy Gordon. Is Gordon over there?
Yeah, Gordon and the kid.
Gordon?
Joe. Okay, all right.
Raise your right hand. State of Louisiana, Parish of St. Bernard. I, Saint Jeanne.
I, Darlene Acevedo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of Louisiana.
And the Constitution and laws of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 3.
Of School Board Member, District 3.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I have those glasses on.
Congratulations, Ms. Acevedo. Mr. Joseph Long.
Oh, there's two of them.
There you go. Yes.
District 5, Ms. Lena Torres will be doing the swearing in.
Now, the other one is Mr. Joe.
Wait for my daughter and my wife. Don't y'all get on this side?
Raise your right hand. State of Louisiana, Parish of St. Bernard.
I, Saint Jeanne.
I, Joseph V. Long, Senior.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'm gonna get Ms. Lena to sign, and I'll get Joe to sign.
I should do now, huh?
Yeah. Wait, let's see. This is him. And this is you.
Yeah, he's got us.
Okay.
This is me right here.
Right here, the long one. And there's a second one?
I'm gonna get Joe to sign.
Uh, well, right now. Can Joe, you watch, bring us back to his place and send over.
Okay. Congratulations, Mr. Long. Next, Mr. Donald Campbell, District 11.
State of Louisiana, Parish of St. Bernard. I, Saint Jeanne.
I, Darlene Acevedo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 5.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 5.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Egan.
Do I actually need your notary number, or can I just put attorney? Put it once, I'll copy. Okay. Inside.
You're coming down. I know, I know.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Okay, we're going to District 4, Mr. Shaun Warner, and we have his daughter, Amanda Pleasance.
Ready? Can't see you.
Ready?
Ready.
I, Shaun Warner.
I, Shaun Warner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Louisiana.
Of the state of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The, and perform.
And perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
This is my daughter in age, and this is the eighth time she's sworn in.
Oh, wow.
Congratulations, Mr. Don Campbell. And thank you, Ms. Torres. Okay, we'll go on to District number one, Catherine Lemoine, and we have Mr. Mike Inard.
I, state your name.
I, Catherine Lemoine.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And perform.
And perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 4.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board, District 4.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I need you to get your sign. I'm gonna get you to sign. Okay. You want to do anything? Yeah, give me, I must stand.
Congratulations, Mr. Warner. Okay, I guess. The next person, I guess, is Cliff England.
I, state your name.
I, Clifford M. Ennam.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 5.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 5.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'm gonna get Ms. Lena to sign, and I'll get Joe to sign.
I should do now, huh?
Yeah. Wait, let's see. This is him. And this is you.
Yeah, he's got us.
Okay.
This is me right here.
Right here, the long one. And there's a second one?
I'm gonna get Joe to sign.
Uh, well, right now. Can Joe, you watch, bring us back to his place and send over.
Okay. Congratulations, Mr. Long. Next, Mr. Donald Campbell, District 11.
State of Louisiana, Parish of St. Bernard.
I, Saint Jeanne.
I, Donald Campbell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And perform.
And perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
This is my daughter in age, and this is the eighth time she's sworn in.
Oh, wow.
Congratulations, Mr. Don Campbell.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Torres. Okay, we'll go on to District number one, Catherine Lemoine, and we have Mr. Mike Inard.
I, state your name.
I, Catherine Lemoine.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And perform.
And perform.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 1.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 1.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I need you to get your sign. I'm gonna get you to sign. Okay. You want to do anything? Yeah, give me, I must stand.
Congratulations, Mr. Warner. Okay, I guess. The next person, I guess, is Cliff England.
I, state your name.
I, Clifford M. Ennam.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
And perform all of the duties.
And perform all of the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Member, District 1.
As St. Bernard School Member, School Board Member, District 1.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Catherine, watch your sign, he's here. I'll fill in the date. Yeah, I can fill in the date.
Good.
There you go.
Congratulations, Ms. Lemoine. Okay, we're going to District 2, Mr. William Egan. Here we have Mr. Mike Inard.
Left hand, right hand up. Oh, okay. I'm right-handed, I was confused.
I, state your name.
I, William H. Egan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 2.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 2.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, we're going to District 4, Mr. Shaun Warner, and we have his daughter, Amanda Pleasance.
Ready? Can't see you.
Ready?
Ready.
I, Shaun Warner.
I, Shaun Warner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 5.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 5.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Mr. Cliff England.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Okay, we're going to District number nine, Mr. Sheldon Smith, Mr. Danny Dysart.
Unlike Ms. Lena, I do not know this by heart. How many times have you done that?
You've done it, Lemoine.
No, I doubt it, I doubt it. All right, Sheldon, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sheldon P. Smith.
I, Sheldon P. Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 2. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Egan.
Do I actually need your notary number, or can I just put attorney? Put it once, I'll copy. Okay. Inside.
You're coming down. I know, I know.
Awesome, thank you. Did you?
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Okay, we're going to District 4, Mr. Shaun Warner, and we have his daughter, Amanda Pleasance.
Ready? Ready?
I, Shaun Warner.
I, Shaun Warner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 4.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 4.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I need you to get your sign. I'm gonna get you to sign. Okay. You want to do anything? Yeah, give me, I must stand.
Congratulations, Mr. Warner. Okay, I guess. The next person, I guess, is Cliff England.
I, state your name.
I, Clifford M. Ennam.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And perform.
And perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 4.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 4.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Warner.
Okay, I guess. The next person, I guess, is Cliff England.
I, state your name.
I, Clifford M. Ennam.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 8.
As District 8.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my ability and understanding.
Understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
He just grabbed you.
We got some signing.
Yeah, he did, he's ahead.
That's why he's present.
Congratulations to Mr. Cliff England.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Okay, we're going to District number nine, Mr. Shelton Smith, Mr. Danny Dysart.
Unlike Ms. Lena, I do not know this by heart. How many times have you done that?
You've done it, Lemoine.
No, I doubt it, I doubt it. All right, Sheldon, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sheldon P. Smith.
I, Sheldon P. Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
That I will support.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As School Board Member, District 9.
As School Board Member, District 9.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
She needed your script. Here, I need you to sign.
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Smith.
Do I need a notary number or anything, or can I just put a pellet cord around you?
I'm gonna give you a notary number.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Dysart. Okay, next we have District 10, Ms. Rosalyn White.
A little bit. 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 A little bit.
I, state your name.
I, Clifford M. Ennam.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 8.
District 8.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my ability and understanding.
Understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
He did, he's ahead. That's why he's present.
Congratulations to Mr. Cliff England.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Okay, we're going to District number nine, Mr. Shelton Smith, Mr. Danny Dysart.
Unlike Ms. Lena, I do not know this by heart. How many times have you done that?
You've done it, Lemoine.
No, I doubt it, I doubt it. All right, Sheldon, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sheldon P. Smith.
I, Shelton P. Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
That I will support.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially. Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 7.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 7.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I know Mr. Campbell said that Ms. Lena was his good luck charm, that she swore him in eight times, and I'm not gonna say that I'm her good luck charmer, but that means I think this is my ninth time that I'm going.
Congratulations, Ms. Dysart.
Thank you.
Now, what this board has to do now, we have to make an appointment for board number, for District number six. So at this time, the chair would like to have someone make a motion to appoint an interim board member for the school board, District 6, until the election could be held on March 30th, 2019.
I will so move this to England.
Motion second by Mr. Campbell. Ms. Fauchet, will we do a roll call vote, please?
All right, Mrs. Acevedo.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Egan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lemoine.
Yes.
Mrs. Dysart.
For.
Mr. England.
For.
Mr. Long.
For.
Mr. Smith.
For.
Mr. Warner.
For.
Mrs. White.
For.
Mrs. White, excuse me.
Congratulations. Ma'am, since you're on same board number, you need to be installing.
Sworn in.
And we're gonna have, let's see, Mr. Danny Dysart. Judge Danny Dysart.
I, Carolyn H. Kraft.
I, Carolyn H. Kraft.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
That I will support.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 6.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 6.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Carolyn Kraft. That's gonna conclude the swearing in ceremony. We're gonna have some refreshments, and we're gonna take about a 15 to 30 minute break before we go into our general committee meeting. So we're gonna either item number six, adjournment, or motion. Ms. Acevedo, second, by Mr. Campbell. Love and favor?
Yes.
This means adjournment. Just go enjoy yourselves.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to come together this evening in the interests of our children. We thank you for the safe return of our family from their, families from their holiday travels, and we ask your special blessings as we begin the second half of our school year. Father, we pray a special blessing upon our new school board member who joins our family this evening, as well as all of our returning members. Please give them all the wisdom necessary to do their best work for your children, and the courage and strength in their decision-making as they strive to represent what is best for all of our children. Father, please let us all continue to work in harmony and as a team that has before us the mighty task of strengthening education in St. Bernard Parish. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Egan, will you lead us in a place, please?
I, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Fauchet.
Mrs. Acevedo, here.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mrs. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Mrs. Dysart.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mrs. White.
Here.
I'm gonna get you to, I'll get you to sign.
Okay. You want to do anything?
Yeah, there you go. You okay?
You don't want to tell me?
You're going next.
Okay, who wants to tell, oh, to tell anything else?
Since you gave me the food, it spelled right on here, so.
Ready?
It's got this.
Captain, Mr. Terry Nikosia.
Right here, right here. There you go. Thank you.
Right there, ma'am.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me, please. I, Rosalyn White. I, Rosalyn White. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. The Constitution. The Constitution. And laws. And laws. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution and laws. And the Constitution and laws. Of Louisiana. Of Louisiana. And that I will faithfully and impartially. And I will faithfully and impartially. Discharge and perform. Discharge and perform. All the duties. All the duties. Incumbent on me. Incumbent on me. As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 10. As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 10. According to the best of my ability and understanding. According to the best of my ability and understanding. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
Do I have to put a number for you at all, or do I just put District Attorney?
Attorney's, go.
Attorney.
You want me to put my number?
If you got it, yeah, go ahead. And I'll copy it on this one. Congratulations, Ms. White. Thank you.
Rosalyn, congratulations. Okay, okay, now we're gonna go to District 7, Diana Dysart. And Mr. Danny Dysart.
Come on, Daniel, come on, Daniel. Come on.
You don't know what to make me with this robe.
I know. Come on, guys. Addie, would you hold on, would you hold on? Yes. It's okay, look, it's a nice seat.
Last time you filled up, you filled up the place, you didn't fill the place.
No, I did, I just needed the script. Fair warning, the Dysart crowd is here, so y'all might wanna hit the refreshments. Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Diana B. Dysart.
I, Diana Barcelona Dysart.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 10.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 10.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Do I have to put a number for you at all, or do I just put District Attorney?
Attorney.
Attorney.
You want me to put my number?
If you got it, yeah, go ahead. And I'll copy it on this one. Congratulations, Ms. White. Thank you.
Rosalyn, congratulations. Okay, okay, now we're gonna go to District 7, Diana Dysart. And Mr. Danny Dysart.
Come on, Daniel, come on, Daniel. Come on.
You don't know what to make me with this robe.
I know. Come on, guys. Addie, would you hold on, would you hold on? Yes. It's okay, look, it's a nice seat.
Last time you filled up, you filled up the place, you didn't fill the place.
No, I did, I just needed the script. Fair warning, the Dysart crowd is here, so y'all might wanna hit the refreshments. Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Diana B. Dysart.
I, Diana Barcelona Dysart.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
That I will support.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And the laws of this state.
And the laws, Constitution and laws of this state, Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 7.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 7.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I know Mr. Campbell said that Ms. Lena was his good luck charm, that she swore him in eight times, and I'm not gonna say that I'm her good luck charmer, but that means I think this is my ninth time that I'm going. Congratulations, Ms. Dysart.
Thank you.
Now, what this board has to do now, we have to make an appointment for board number, for District number six. So at this time, the chair would like to have, to have someone make a motion to appoint an interim board member for the school board, District 6, until the election could be held on March 30th, 2019.
I will so move this to England.
Motion second by Mr. Campbell. Ms. Fauchet, will we do a roll call vote, please?
All right, Mrs. Acevedo.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Egan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lemoine.
Yes.
Mrs. Dysart.
For.
Mr. England.
For.
Mr. Long.
For.
Mr. Smith.
For.
Mr. Warner.
For.
And Mr. White. Mrs. White, excuse me.
Congratulations. Ma'am, since you're on same board number, you need to be installing.
Sworn in.
And we're gonna have, let's see, Mr. Danny Dysart. Judge Danny Dysart.
I, Carolyn H. Kraft.
I, Carolyn H. Kraft.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of Louisiana.
Of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 6.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 6.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Do I have to put a number for you at all, or do I just put District Attorney?
Attorney.
You want me to put my number?
If you got it, yeah, go ahead.
Congratulations, Ms. White. Thank you.
Rosalyn, congratulations. Okay, okay, now we're gonna go to District 7, Diana Dysart. And Mr. Danny 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 Dysart. And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 7.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 7.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I know Mr. Campbell said that Ms. Lena was his good luck charm, that she swore him in eight times, and I'm not gonna say that I'm her good luck charmer, but that means I think this is my ninth time that I'm going. Congratulations, Ms. Dysart.
Thank you.
Now, what this board has to do now, we have to make an appointment for board number, for District number six. So at this time, the chair would like to have, to have someone make a motion to appoint an interim board member for the school board, District 6, until the election could be held on March 30th, 2019.
I will so move this to England.
Motion second by Mr. Campbell. Ms. Fauchet, will we do a roll call vote, please?
All right, Mrs. Acevedo.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Egan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lemoine.
Yes.
Mrs. Dysart.
For.
Mr. England.
For.
Mr. Long.
For.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mrs. White.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fauchet. Move on to item number four, invitation from Mrs. Bloom to visit school cafeterias during the month of February. Good evening, Ms. Bloom.
Good evening. I'd like to invite you all to come visit again our school cafeterias the week of February 4th through 8th, but if you cannot make it that week, anytime is fine. Every year, the school board members are invited to come work with the ladies and visit the children, they really get a kick out of it, the ladies enjoy it too. Come see what we do in our, you know, school nutrition program. It's a little different, Mr. Egan was telling me tonight, I just thought you just cooked. And I said, well, that's what I used to think when I was a teacher, until I realized all the rules and regulations that we have to follow, as well as trying to get the kids happy and find things that they love to eat, and so we're always trying to improve. The first page is a letter and an invitation, the second page is a list of the cafeteria managers, the breakfast and lunch times for every school, and are the phone numbers if you'd like to call the manager ahead of time, or if you'd like to call my office, that'll be fine. We'd like to be able to have somebody come and take a photo of you when you're there as well, so if you let us know when you're coming. And then the last two pages are the menus that are planned for the week at each school, you know, site. So you all can get prepared and ready to go, get your aprons ready. We'll supply everything for you.[1366.12]
Now, what this board has to do now, we have to make an appointment for board number, for district number six. So at this time, the chair would like to have someone make a motion to appoint an interim board member for the school board, district six, until the election could be held on March 30th, 2019.
I will so move Mr. England.
Motion seconded by Mr. Campbell. Ms. Fochet, will we do a roll call vote, please?
All right, Mrs. Acevedo.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Egan. Mrs. Lemoine.
Yes.
Mrs. Dysart.
Four.
Mr. England.
Four.
Mr. Long.
Four.
Mr. Smith.
Four.
Mr. Warner.
Four.
And Mr. White. Mrs. White, excuse me.
Congratulations. Since you're seeing board number, you need to be installing it.
Sworn in.
And we're gonna have, um, let's see, Mr. Danny Dysart. Judge Danny Dysart.
I, Carolyn H. Kraft.
I, Carolyn H. Kraft.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
Constitution and the laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, district six.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, district six.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Carolyn Kraft. That's gonna conclude the swearing in ceremony. Um, we do wanna have some refreshments, and we're gonna take about a fifteen to thirty minute break before we go into our general committee meeting. So, uh, we will need item number six adjournment, a motion. Ms. Acevedo, second, or Mr. Campbell. All in favor?
Aye.
This means adjournment. Just go enjoy yourselves.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to come together this evening in the interests of our children. We thank you for the safe return of our family from their, families from their holiday travels, and we ask your special blessings as we begin the second half of our school year. Father, we pray a special blessing upon our new school board member who joins our family this evening, as well as all of our returning members. Please give them all the wisdom necessary to do their best work for your children, and the courage and strength in their decision-making as they strive to represent what is best for all of our children. Father, please let us all continue to work in harmony and as a team that has before us the mighty task of strengthening education in St. Bernard Parish. These things we ask in your name.
Amen. Ms. Egan, one of the ladies in the class, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Fochet.
Mrs. Acevedo, here. Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mrs. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Yes.
Mrs. Lemoine.
Here.
Mrs. Dysart.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mrs. White.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Fochet. Uh, move on to item number four, invitation from Mrs. Bloom to visit school cafeterias during the month of February. Good evening, Miss Bloom.
Good evening. I'd like to invite you all to come visit again our school cafeterias, um, the week of February 4th through 8th, but if you cannot make it that week, anytime is fine. Um, every year, the school board members are invited to come work with the ladies and, um, visit the children. They really get a kick out of it. The ladies enjoy it, too. Come see what we do in our, um, you know, school nutrition program. It's a little different. Mr. Egan was telling me tonight, I just thought, you just cooked. And I said, well, that's what I used to think when I was a teacher, until I realized all the rules and regulations that we have to follow, as well as, um, trying to get the kids happy and find things that they love to eat, and so we're always trying to improve. The first page is a letter and an invitation. The second page is a list of the cafeteria managers, the breakfast and lunch times for every school, and other phone numbers if you'd like to, um, call the manager ahead of time, or if you'd like to call my office, that'll be fine. We'd like to be able to have, um, somebody come and take a photo of you when you're there as well, so if you let us know when you're coming. And then the last two pages are the menus that are planned for the week at, um, each school, you know, site. So you all can get prepared and ready to go get your aprons ready. We'll supply everything for you. And if you can come all day, it's great. If you can come for a few minutes, that's good, too. Whenever you like to come, we'd be glad to have you.
It's always a great time to come over to the cafeterias and see, because these, these ladies really do a fantastic job.
They do.
And we really appreciate all that they do for our school system, especially for the kids.
They do.
But, uh, but could you just let the public know how many meals that we give each and every day?
Yes. Well, we're, this year, our average, um, daily lunches are forty-eight hundred and twenty-four lunches. We serve twenty-six hundred breakfast meals every day, and we serve about a hundred and sixty-six snacks every day. And also, this, um, January, we were lucky enough to get a fresh fruit and vegetable grant for Smith Elementary. So those children every day, um, no, three days a week, will get fresh fruit and vegetable snack after lunch every day. And so that's another good thing that's happening.
And also from the preschool to the eighth grade, isn't it free for the, for the parents?
Um, yes. All the schools are on community eligibility program, which means that they eat, all those children eat for free. It's not based on income, it's based on our eligibility. That's a four-year, um, grant, and then we can reapply, but it depends on if we are able to do so. And, um, the high school, of course, still has applications, but I'm glad you brought that up, because I wanna tell you all a little something about, on the last page, I put a couple of little notes, just so you're informed. Um, the USDA, two years ago, developed a new guidelines for preschool children in our school cafeterias. And so if you go to the elementary schools, you will notice that preschool children cannot have any flavored milk. They can only have, like, unflavored milk, which is white, what we call white milk, but it's unflavored milk. And then they can't have certain foods that have sugar, too much sugar. So some of the breakfasts have to be different for preschool. Um, for instance, on the day I have, um, a cinnamon roll, we have to do cereal, and that's low-sugar cereal. It's developed for school system, so it looks like the things you buy at the grocery store, but it's developed for school system, so it's low sugar. It's got six grams of sugar instead of maybe, you know, twelve or fifteen grams per ounce. And then they have to have everything on their plate. The preschool children have to have everything on their plate. So when you see that, I wanted to make sure that you, you knew that these are the regulations that we follow. And that's because in a head start setting, or in maybe a preschool center setting, the children would eat at communal tables, and they'd pass the food around. But in a school, we can't do that, because of course, we don't have the ability feeding all the other kids and preschools. So they have to come through the line, and that's their way of choosing whatever they like to eat, but they are, they're exposed to everything. And so those little things, and then at the, you know, I told you about preschool, and then I told you the K through twelve students, they can have the unflavored or the flavored milk. It's just gotta be a certain milk fat percentage, which is all we offer. And then they can have three things on a plate, and still they have to have one fruit and one vegetable on a plate, at least, of the three things.
So it's a little complex, then.
It can be.
Try telling the four-year-old he can't have chocolate milk, but the five-year-old can.
Well.
It's a little tough.
We really have worked that out with Ms. Halton, and with all of the preschool, um, people when it first came out, oh, how are we gonna do this? So what we do is, we only have that part of the milk cooler open when the preschool kids come, so they don't have to see chocolate or strawberry milk. They only see white milk. So we kinda worked that out, because that was my concern when I first found out about, oh, how are we gonna do this? You know, how are we gonna, because we don't wanna make the children upset.
Sure.
But, um, and the little, the little preschool kids, sometimes when I go in, one of them told me a couple of times ago, when I get to kindergarten, I get to get chocolate. And I said, yes, you do. So they know, they know. But, you know, of course, it's a pleasure and a joy, and I really hope you can, um, join us, because we really do appreciate everything you do for us and support. And also, you know, the kids and the ladies love to have you there, so thank you so much.
And we appreciate everything that they do for us. So, um, any board members who'd like to say anything? Diana?
Thank you, Miss Bloom.
Ms. Dysart.
Thank you. Um, we appreciate you keeping us abreast of all the, um, regulations that we do have to follow, and also you do a wonderful job, and so do all of our cafeteria workers. They do. We do realize when we go visit on that day, it's one of our favorite days of the year, you know, that we can get in the, in the cafeteria and actually help them. You, you really can appreciate their hard work.
Yes.
Very difficult and hard work, and, um, that's a lot of meals to serve.
It is.
Daily, you know? And they do a fantastic job, and, um, it's wonderful to see the, how they interact with the students and the children, and they know just about every child's name in school.
Yes, they do.
And they know their particular habits and the things they do like and don't like, but it's just, uh, it's a great day that, when we can go visit and spend time in the cafeteria. And thanks again for all the hard work that you and your team do.
Yeah, great team, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fochet.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanna comment, you can let my friends at Shelby High's cafeteria, I'll be there this year, and I'll have the Tabasco sauce.
Thank you.
Any other board members? If not, thank you, Miss Bloom, for your time.
Thank you.
Move on to item number five, educational, Ms. Lemoine.
Thank you, Mr. England. Our agenda item number five is the FAFSA form completion, and we have Ms. Lametta here with us tonight.
Good evening. Um, for this evening, the education item, for the education item, I wanted to do a quick reminder to the parents of our graduating seniors of the new requirement that the LDOE put in last school year, that graduating seniors, as a requirement to graduate, have to complete either a federal financial aid form, which is the FAFSA, or the state form, which is TOPS. And LDOE put this requirement in place, Bessie approved this policy, because they did find that, of course, a big barrier to students attending post-secondary education and/or training is cost. And they found far too few students, few students were taking advantage of these financial aid opportunities that were given to them. So what they did was, they said, if you don't fill out a FAFSA form or a TOPS form, you can't graduate. Now, what we do for our students at Shelby High is, we and Raleigh, we have them fill out the federal form, because by completing the federal form, it is applying for TOPS, in addition to other financial aid federally, which might be work-study, or student loan, or any other institutional, uh, financial aid you could receive. So we have our students fill out FAFSA, and Shelby High, really, um, in September, Mr. Warner presents this to the students, who are aware of it. They've also done this school year already, November 8th, and December 12th, a parent night, where they have computers set up, a PowerPoint, which walks the parents through step-by-step how to fill the form out. In addition, they have people from Shelby High to walk around and facilitate any questions the parents might have and help them. And the main reason I wanted to come tonight is, on February 21st, Shelby High is having another night to assist the parents in filling the forms out. In addition, we have people on-site at Shelby High who counsel the students and work with them and help them understand the importance of it. Um, and this date of February 21st will be on the school website and the district website, and May 2nd is the deadline for graduating seniors to complete the FAFSA form. And again, they can opt to just fill out the TOPS, but the TOPS form is just for state aid for students who reside in Louisiana and attend school in Louisiana. The federal form opens your opportunities up to much more aid, so we are assisting our students to fill out the FAFSA form.
Thank you so much for that information, Ms. Lametta. We know that regardless of a student's academic achievement, finding that financial access to, um, post-secondary education is sometimes very difficult. I know tonight, we've got Chancellor Emeritus, Dr. Warner, in the audience, and he knows this very well, that at noon, as we've been very involved with the FAFSA nights, and, uh, you know, trying to provide some support, so if there's anything that we can do, please let me know. But thank you all for providing parents with this, with support.
I would like to add one more thing, that if you're a parent of a student who does have FAFSA already, you do have to fill it out every year, your child is in post-secondary education. So we fill it out as a graduating senior, but you must complete it every year, so they can see if you're still eligible.
Right.
So it's not just a one-time form.
Right. Any questions for Ms. Lametta? Yes, Mr. Long?
Just briefly, uh, refresh my memory, the FAFSA forms have to be filled out after the parents file their, uh, tax returns, is that correct?
Well, they've added, they've, um, made the date earlier now, because it used to be after they filled out the tax return, it was much too late, so they pushed up the date.
Oh, okay.
So they're allowing them to use the, um, forms from the prior year?
Prior year, yes.
So they can fill it out in the fall of their senior year?
Okay.
If they so choose.
Yes, but that was a barrier.
Right.
In the past.
That was, that was a big problem for parents.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Lametta? Thank you very much. Agenda item number six is an executive item for Mr. Long.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Lemoine. And we have item six, resolution establishing a date, time, and place of our regular monthly meetings. Um, this is a reminder, board members, we, we always meet on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, with a few exceptions there, as you see in the, uh, in the middle paragraph. Um, what we would need is a motion to send this to the full board, where it will be read into the minutes. Motion by Ms. Acevedo? I'll second the motion, but I have a question. Second by Mr. Warner, and go ahead with your question. Um, May meeting, there are general committee meeting is May 21st. That's kinda late in the month for a general committee meeting.
The, um...
Is it graduation on the 14th?
That's why.
Right.
Right. So the committee meeting will be the third Tuesday, and the regular meeting, the fourth Tuesday, in the month of May, because the second Tuesday is the, um, graduation.
Makes sense. Thank you. Okay. Thanks for pointing that out, Mr. Warner. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, please vote your machines.
Motion passes, 11-0.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to Mr. England.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Long. Um, item number seven, personnel changes for the month of January 2019. Mr. Granberg, glad to have you here, sir.
Glad to be here. Not much going on right now.
Yeah.
Which is good.
Yeah. That's good.
Very good. The resignation that we have, we've already filled the position at the last board meeting, that person was appointed at that time.
So, so we in good shape, then?
Right now.
Right now.
Tomorrow might be different.
Given day.
That could be Murphy's Law.
Tomorrow might be different.
Okay, so. Any questions for Mr. Granberg? This is for information only, so, thank you, Mr. Granberg.
All right.
Okay, item number eight, superintendent's recommendations.
Um, just some, just some reminders, at the regular meeting, which will be on Tuesday, the 14th, January 14th, we'll have the election of the board officers at that time, and if necessary, any resolutions relating to signature changes. We'll also have super news that night, instead of tonight, um, that'll be after the student of the year, uh, interviews will have been done. And we have two industrial tax exemptions that will be on the agenda for consideration by the board, whether to approve or deny the intu, the industrial tax exemptions. So those will be agenda items on the 22nd as well.
Thank you, Ms. Fochet. Before we join, I just, I'm sorry, Mr. Long, you have something to say?
Well, just one question for Ms. Fochet, um, on the industrial tax exemptions, will we have a public hearing, uh?
There's no, there's no need for a public hearing, but any member of the public, since it is an agenda item, has the opportunity to speak prior to the vote on that particular item.
Okay.
So there will be opportunity for anyone to speak on them, if they so choose.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from Ms. Fochet? Okay, good. Yes, Mr. Dysart.
Yes, I'd just like to point a privilege, to thank, um, Miss Bloom, and also to thank Ms. Cindy England, who helped prepare many of the items for our associate tonight for our swearing-in ceremony. So thank you very much, Cindy and Jen. Oh, and Shelby. And Shelby, too. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Dysart, but before we close, I'd just like to, um, congratulate every board member, yeah, because we've got a few issues coming up in the near future, so, uh, we will take care of that business when it comes up, so. Item number nine, adjournment. Have Ms. Acevedo second by Mr. Campbell. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this meeting's adjourned. Good night.